Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 7th, Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll begin our meeting with a flag salute led by Supervisor Duran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Duran. We'll now move to statement of meeting procedures read by our lovely clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, January 7th, 2014. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you were here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you're hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now is the time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on any item that is not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And our next item is Board of Supervisors reorganization of the board. Before we do that, oh, I'm sorry, we've got Supervisor Yuler, did you want?
If you were ready to entertain, but you said that before, so I defer.
Oh, okay. I'm not going to entertain. Sometimes I do.
You're so short. You're always entertaining.
It's been my pleasure to be the chair this past year. You know, it's not without its challenges, but county's moving in a positive way forward. Although our budget's not completely robust, we've seen some turnaround, we're seeing some rise in revenues, and I think we're in a good place. We've seen some new faces, our new county fiscal manager, Andy Heath, is with us now, and then Jeff Brown from Health and Human Services, our new Health and Human Services Director, a new medical officer, and I'm probably missing someone, but we have some new people in place that I feel comfortable, as we move forward, that this county is going in the right direction. And so anyhow, I want to just thank you for my time as being a chair and thank my colleagues for their support. And now, we will move to the Board of Supervisors reorganization of the board. Now Supervisor Yuler. Oh Supervisor Montgomery.
Supervisor Yuler was deferring to me. It's my pleasure to nominate Supervisor Duran for our Chair 2014.
Okay, it's been moved in second to any other nominations. Nominations are closed. Alrighty, it's been a motion in second to elect Supervisor Duran as Chair for 2014. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Congratulations. You can have the chair. And then you can move to... Sure. Well, let's get together here.
Before I move on to the next item determining the Vice Chair and electing the Vice Chair of the board, I do want to present a memento to Supervisor Holmes for the year as served as the Chairman of the Board. As many of you know and have ever served on a board, whether it's a Board of Supervisors, whether it's a junior little league, any of those types of boards in the community, you know that sometimes it can be a very thankless job in times of controversy and other times it can be a wonderful experience. But throughout any type of chairpersonship, leadership is really what gets you through it. And I want to commend Supervisor Holmes for his leadership during this past year and his leadership on the board.
Thank you, Matt.
Alright, we'll move to our second item, the selection of the 2014 Vice Chair.
Chairman Duran. Just going to get used to saying. Chairman Duran, I would very happily nominate Supervisor Yuler for Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I suppose. Okay, well. Congratulations Supervisor Yuler is Vice Chair for 2014. Alrighty, we'll move, now move on to our consent agenda. Oh, that's right. That's right. I'm sorry. We will move on to committee reports. Any committee reports?
I have none.
Okay, I guess we don't have any. Now we will move on to our consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion in second. Do we have any commentary or anything that wants to be pulled out by the public? Okay, we have a motion. Motion in second, roll call vote.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Bygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Yuler?
Yes.
Right. Looks like we have a little bit of time before we meet our nine, 10 items, so we'll move to item number four, Administrative Services Procurement.
My name's Brett Wood, I'm your Purchasing Manager. With me is Ms. April Paye, Senior Buyer with Procurement Division. We're here today to, with a recommendation, to award a new BPO to Staples for the next year to provide our office supplies for the county. I'm sorry, we're here to recommend OfficeMax as the new vendor for our office supplies for the county. With that, we're also recommending that we extend our current contract with Staples to the end of January of this year and increase that contract by $50,000 for a new aggregate total, or for $80,000 to effectively have that contract be $980,000. The following contract with, the new contract with OfficeMax, we're recommending for $900,000 for the period of February 1st to March 31st of 2015. We're requesting your board's approval to authorize us to do two one-year renewals as long as the aggregate price does not increase by over 10 percent and to authorize Purchasing Manager to execute those documents. Ms. April Paye will provide the background and detail, and then we'll be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Good morning. The Purchasing Policy Manual permits the county to piggyback on other public agency contracts and effectively leverage the work that they've already done. This is quite effective for the county when we're looking at contracts that have been awarded by other larger agencies because they have a greater purchasing power and we're essentially able to get a lot better pricing for Placer County. Essentially, this is a type of a sole source selection. That is, we can just choose any public agency contract we want that we believe is in the best interests of the county to use. In the case of office supply contracts, there are numerous office supply contracts that are at our disposal, and so procurement feels that it's not a good business practice to just essentially choose one without some sort of extensive analysis. Pricing for these office supply contracts is very, very competitive, so the price difference between one contract and another is very minimal. So the best way to do that is to do a very, use a very systematic approach. The approach that we have used historically and the approach that we used most recently was to obtain a complete list of the office supplies that county departments purchased in a one-year period and release that list to office supply vendors who have access to those other public agency contracts and price Placer County's own purchases under those contracts. That's the best way that we feel is we can determine which contract is the best fit for us in our own purchasing practices. We released that list through a system called Public Purchase. It is the system that we typically use for our competitive bids, however, this was not a competitive bid per se. It was just the best way that we felt to get that information out to as many vendors as possible because we certainly don't want to limit our options. Increasing competition actually is in the best interest of the county. We sent notices to a total of 27 vendors initially, but because it is a public website and accessible by any vendor across the country, actually 40 firms ended up accessing that to see if they could meet our needs. The county received a total of four responses. Those responses were evaluated based on the pricing that they offered for each of those items. Bidders were instructed very specifically to only offer the items that were listed in that bid list. For example, if it was a 3M Post-it note, we wanted them to price that specific 3M Post-it note, including the size, the color, and the package. And that was the only way that we could determine that we would be able to fairly and equally compare those contracts. All four vendors, as it turns out, are eligible to receive local vendor preference as defined by our current policy, so they were all afforded that preference, which essentially made them equal. None of them offered a prompt pay discount, so the pricing was evaluated solely based on the product cost itself. As I mentioned, four, a total of four vendors responded. The price difference between the lowest vendor, which was OfficeMax, and the second lowest vendor, which was Staples, is only 1.49 percent. And we're talking about, you know, annual spend of about $800,000. So you can tell it's pretty tight. As it turned out, any vendor who could not match the specific item that was on the list was instructed to no-bid that item. As I mentioned before, we wanted to make sure that we could fairly and equitably evaluate those items. OfficeMax chose not to price 787 of those items, which sounds like a significant number, but when you're talking about the thousands of items that we order in a year, it really only amounted to less than 17 percent of the items. We also, since that was, seemed like an unusual number of items to no-bid, as it were, we looked at each one of those items to determine how that really affected the outcome and whether it swayed the outcome one way or the other. What we determined is that most of those items were only purchased once a year, and they were not, each one of those was not a very high-dollar item. It's not that unusual for someone to either make a mistake in this sort of a process or not be able to match an item. As we mentioned, we got that list of items for what the county purchased in an entire 12-month period, and that list was acquired from our current vendor, our incumbent. So there are, there is always a chance that a vendor cannot match some of those items. We didn't find any patterns that would indicate that there was anything unusual, and we determined that the pricing on the remaining items was a reasonable course of action. After we made that determination that OfficeMax was the lowest-priced vendor and offered the most favorable contract for Placer County, we released that information to all of the bidders so that they would all be kept in the loop and all would understand the direction that the county was choosing to take. Subsequent to that, Staples filed a formal protest in accordance with the Purchasing Policy Manual. And in accordance with the standard policy as directed in the manual, the Director of Administrative Services reviewed each of the points that was brought up in Staples protest and determined them to be without merit. Subsequent to that, we came to the conclusion that it was in the county's best interest to use the contract offered by OfficeMax, which is a contract that was competitively bid by Oakland County, Michigan, and that that contract is in the county's best interest. Therefore, we come to your board asking for your approval to award a contract to OfficeMax in the total amount of $900,000 for the period of February 1st of 2014 through March 31st of 2015. And we also ask for your approval to extend the current contract with Staples through the end of January so that we can effect a smooth transition between contracts. And with that, I stand for your questions.
Are there any board questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this contract with OfficeMax is through this fiscal year or this calendar?
Yes, it will run through the current fiscal year and into next fiscal year.
And then the, when it comes back for renewal, you'll evaluate whether we're getting the best deal? Is that how that works?
We have not historically evaluated or conducted this extensive of an analysis each and every year. As I mentioned, the policy allows us to do sort of a direct selection if we determine that it's in the county's best interest. However, the option is always there for us to do an analysis each and every year.
And you'll get feedback from the departments whether they're being served as they should as they're used to or as they need?
Yes, absolutely. That is a very key element of the management of this contract because it serves the entire county and it affects virtually every employee. It is very important to us that we monitor the contract door very closely to ensure they're providing the best customer service to us and they are meeting the department's needs.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. I just want to be clear on this. So you're asking us to take two actions today. One is to extend through the end of this month with Staples.
Correct.
And then the second is to enter into what appears to be a 13-month contract with OfficeMax?
Yes.
So it doesn't expire either at the end of our fiscal year or at the end of a calendar year. It's a 13-month contract.
Correct.
And at the end of that 13-month contract, we have an option to extend, but we're not required to extend.
That's correct.
Okay.
The contract with Oakland County, Michigan, is actually in effect through May of 2016.
Okay, our staff report indicates that it's through March 31st of 2015?
The, we're requesting your approval to utilize that contract through May of 2015. The contract that was awarded by the other agency is going to be valid beyond that date.
I see. Okay.
We're piggybacking on their contract.
I understand the distinction.
Okay.
Following up on Supervisor Holmes' comments, I think given the contention, for lack of a better word, that was engendered by this item, I would like to see some sort of at least overview, review of this before we move forward with any kind of renewal on the specific contract.
Be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Yuler.
Yes, just out of curiosity, how do you actually obtain feedback from the various departments regarding vendor performance? Is there, is there any kind of surveying of the departments in regard to vendor performance or is it simply noting objections as they might exist?
There's a variety of ways, sir. One is that we'll go out and talk to a lot of our key users and ask them for feedback on contracts in general, and we also ask for contracts in specific. This is one where we'll keep a very close eye on it to ensure that it's meeting the expectations. But there isn't a formal survey that we've conducted, but we do typically, we request that and we go, we go out and ask departments to make sure that we're getting that information.
And we have used formal surveys in the past, not on a regular basis, but departments are encouraged to contact, contact us directly, and they do, with any specific problems they might have, from what might seem mundane, I can't get the color pen that I want, to troubles with accessing the website or any sort of delivery problems they might be having.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment? Any public comment? Please state your name and...
Good morning, Rick Kurianowitz, Area Sales Manager with Staples.
And I'm Debbie Hauser, and I'm a Strategic Account Leader.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board Members and Chairman. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. And thank you for the reconsideration of this matter. Again, we, we're going to hold consistent with our position that we believe that OfficeMax was non-compliant in their bid. We've had the time to look at some additional facts since the last board meeting as far as this goes, and a couple of different areas we want to touch on. First off, past history. Want to talk about past history of OfficeMax. They've actually bid, this particular bid, the Oakland County Pigback Program, two previous times on recaps we saw for 2007 and 2009. On both those recaps, they actually no-bid in 2007 three items, and in 2009, they no-bid 217 items, I believe. This is a significant jump. And those bids, in those particular bid situations, they came out higher when bidding all the products. In this particular situation, by no-bidding the additional 742 items, they came out lower. So it does have a material impact, you can see from previous performance. Also, we hold strong, we hold to our position that they're non-compliant with the bid specifications. Specifically, Item 6 states that they must bid all 2014 calendars. They did not do that. We've provided that information and we have that. We've also identified 68 items that were not bid correctly on the contract. They bid the wrong item in this particular year. It add up to $14,000. So there's several irregularities going on here. They, OfficeMax does know how to bid this bid properly and to bid compliant because they have done it in the past. There's past history and it does show on the recaps. So again, the evidence is very clear that by choosing not to bid those items and also on those 700-plus items that are identified by Ms. Paye, there was zero explanation put on why they were not bid. They had other items that they did put discontinued by OfficeMax, for example, but these 700-plus items had no description of why they were not bid and no price. So for lack of a better term, the vendor chose to simply not bid those items with no reasoning whatsoever. For a comparative standpoint, we don't know the impact because they gave no price. So we can't judge whether that materially, how much that materially impacted the bid and what the difference is, but past history says when they bid complete, they were higher than us in past performance.
They were also required to put a reason why they no-bid the item if they no-bid an item, so they should have put something there.
Also, at the, about the two hour and 57 minute mark of the last meeting, Mr. Mossbacher stated that they were asked to bid their lead items from the Oakland County contract. There are no, there's nothing in the bid specifications whatsoever, and so we're a bit surprised at that. Also, the core items on the contract are far below the 3,000 items they bid. It's in a much lower range, below 1,000 items. So that's another inconsistency. Another thing they said, they, they only bid items from their contract, yet we actually researched and found items that were not on the Oakland County contract that were bid. We also had an interesting example on batteries, Debbie?
One of the things that was mentioned in the last meeting was that we provided bad data for the bid, in that we said Procter &amp; Gamble was the manufacturer of some batteries and therefore, do I need to stop?
You could go ahead and quickly conclude your thought.
And the reason that they didn't bid the batteries and other items is because they wanted to make extra careful sure, well, that Procter &amp; Gamble is the manufacturer. We went back and double-checked our data and we provided correct data. They just opted not to bid that. So along with the $14,000 in errors that we found since the last meeting, that actually makes us the low bidder.
We have the data with us. Again, at the end of the day, we make the same request we did last time. We ask that either A, OfficeMax be disqualified for non-compliance to the actual bid specifications, which were very clear, which they have not complied with, or if that's not the case, it simply be put out to rebid. Let's use the products that are left so everybody has the same, so it's a level playing field for all vendors to bid responsibly to this bid instead of one having a significant advantage over the others. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
I'm going to go ahead and bring this item back to the board. Any other questions?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again and Happy New Year. My name's Greg Mossbacher, Director of Business Development. I had you last month.
Good morning, I'm Dana Rivero, Local Account Representative.
And I'm Mark Anderson, District Sales Manager for the Area Office Max.
So throughout this entire process, I really feel like there's a lot of misnomers that are happening as we go through this. We've complied with everything we've been asked by the county. When I started meeting with Brett and April a couple of years ago, we spent time, we talked about the pros and cons of how the program works. What are the expectations of the county? What are the expectations when they look at government piggybacks? What are the expectations in service? You know, at the end of the day, service is a huge part of our business, more than just the price of the product. Certainly that is, that's important. It drives savings for the county and our customers. Service issues, what are other things we can bring to the table? So we had some very good open dialogue for probably 18 months to 24 months. So we had a real understanding as we went into any potential RFQ that came up, any bid situation. So when the bid came out in July, we had a good opportunity to review the qualifications, the qualifications of the bid, local preference, can you deliver next day, and the price of the product. Soon as the bid came out, as April mentioned, it was put out through Public Purchase. I asked several questions. I came back on the exact match of items. How do you want us to do this? We're not Staples. Staples sells different products than we do. Yes, we sell a lot of the same products, but there's vendors that we don't represent that they do. It's not a blanket industry. So when we went, I asked the questions, it was understood to me that anything that we could not get an exact match, and I'll give you an example of that. There's times where you may buy something from them that's sold by the dozen that we sell by the each. It's the exact same item, but it's not the same unit of measure. So my understanding, based on the parameters of the bid, was if it was not an exact match, we did not bid the item. It was never in a way to sway the item. That's not how we work. We're an ethical company. We work with integrity, accountability, and to their claims of past, I can't speak to the past. I wasn't involved in that. We weren't involved in that. It was a different team, and we're not talking about the past. We wouldn't have won the last two years' most ethical company, top 150 most ethical companies in the world if that's how we went to market. So at the end of the day, I have provided justification. The reason I didn't put comments is because my understanding was exactly what the parameters of the bid said. No-bid the item. We were, we were told that if it was a discontinued item, that we should put comments. If it was discontinued by OfficeMax versus manufacturer, put comments. But on any item that was not an exact match, we didn't put a comment because we didn't need to. So at the end of the day, I think we really need to focus on, we're so caught up in these 700 items, I'll be down here in a second. What do those items really represent to, in terms of dollar savings, in terms of the budget, in terms of things that is going to drive savings for the county? As April mentioned, 680 to 780 items that we bid following the guidelines of the bid, you bought 10 times of us, 10 times left. 328 of them you bought one time. It equates to less than $3,000 in spend based on the pricing that was put out there from Staples. So we're really splitting hairs over things that, at the end of the day, what is the, what is the overall cost savings to the county? So we've been told we were awarded the business, the protest was denied by the Director of Administrative Services.
I think...
Yeah, you get it.
Sometimes less is more.
Yeah, you got it.[1789.21] what is the overall cost savings to the county? So we've been told we were awarded the business, the protest was denied by the Director of Administrative Services.
I think...
Yeah, you get it.
Sometimes less is more.
Yeah, you got it.
I had two quick comments. Also on this bid, Staples themselves no-bid 143 items, and they also referred to our Oakland County Michigan Agreement, and we're bidding the contract only items. That contract, if they really looked into it, allows for specification by public entities. So we are allowed to add local contracts, if you will.
Correct.
Each individual member, as we have done for Placer County.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further comment from the board? Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no votes? Any abstentions? Okay, passes.
Thank you.
We will move on to our 910 timed item. This is a commendation, a presentation of a commendation honoring Sheriff Behrens, is that correct?
Yes, Chairman.
And this is Chairman Holmes.
All right. Sharon, can you come down to the lectern, please? Mr. Chair, it's my great honor to present this commendation to Sharon for her service on the Mental Health Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, which I am a member. Her leadership on this board has raised it to a different level. We've got some pretty significant quality people now serving on that board. Her appointment or her recognition of the board was in response to an editorial I wrote about, we need some people to serve on the Mental Health Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, and when she applied, we hit the jackpot. So anyhow, let me read this. You and, I see you, I see some board members here with us, and also your husband, Bob. July 7, 2014, in a matter of commendation honoring Sharon Behrens for her invaluable leadership to Placer County by serving on the Placer County Mental Health, Alcohol and Drug Advisory Boards since 2009. Whereas after earning her BA degree from the University of California at Riverside, Sharon began her career as a social worker for San Bernardino County and subsequently for the San Mateo County and Kings County. And whereas Sharon has served on numerous boards, councils, and committees that serve people with special needs throughout California, especially children and infants, foster children, and young people involved in the juvenile justice system. And whereas Sharon and her husband, Bob, have adopted five special needs children, including one who had been abused since birth, and who now, because of Sharon's tireless and unselfish effort, enjoys a life of hope and trust. And whereas for over 40 years, Sharon has provided training, education, and public outreach to government agencies and educational institutions on issues regarding special education in schools, sexual abuse, cultural diversity, learning disabilities, child, children of trauma, and parenting issues for adopted and foster parents. And whereas Sharon has received several awards for her dedication to helping others, including the Starfish Award, presented to individuals that understand and demonstrate that any one person can make a difference in someone's life. And the Women Helping Women Award, given to women who provide encouragement and inspiration to women and girls. And whereas Sharon has served the Placer County Mental Health and Drug, Alcohol Advisory Board since 2009, providing invaluable leadership as the Chair of the Quality Improvement Board and as Chair of the Children's Committee. And whereas Sharon was instrumental in implementing Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board events such as Buzzkill, Trauma Convening, and Recovery Happens. Now therefore be a resolve that the Placer County Board of Supervisors, along with the members of the Placer County Health, Mental Health, Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, congratulate and thank Sharon Behrens for her commitment to helping others and for her service to the people of Placer County. Congratulations. Please, I'll say a few words, and you might want to introduce your board members.
Oh my gosh, this is very sneaky. I thought, I said, Maureen told me I was coming because there were issues that need to be dealt with the board, and I told my husband, who's an attorney, I said, I'm pleading the fifth on anything else. So we have our current Chair, Janet O'Meara, and we have a board member, Teresa Thickens, and we have Dan West, who is on the board. Do we have any other members that I have missed?
I would just like to say, I've sat on a number of state, county, and regional boards, but this is, I keep saying this is the most fun I've ever had, because coming to this board, what I found is, this is a county that believes in programs and ideas that are generated from clients and consumers and the community. They have been supportive of every harebrained idea that I seem to have come up with, but I think it is working with the staff that has been absolutely wonderful. It has been a very collaborative relationship, and I have learned a lot, and I appreciate all of the staff, and I cannot tell you how many ideas I've come up with and they've ended up with all the work, so I appreciate that. Plus, having a very hardworking board. We do not just go and show up for dinner one night a month, so everyone who's here works very hard, and this is very overwhelming, and thank you for this honor. I appreciate it a lot.
I know you learned a lot, but I've learned a lot just by being there with you and listening to your history and what you learned to do to the board, so I appreciate that as well.
Oh, thank you, Tim. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. We'll now move to item number five, Community Development Resource Agency Planning Updated Strategic Plan for the Wildfire Protection and Biomass Utilization Program.
Honorable Chair, Board Members, Brett Story, Sidra. I'm not sure how to follow the magnitude of the goodwill of that last item. That was very impressive.
Do the best you can.
I will try. On behalf of Sidra today, I'd like to bring you the updated strategic plan. We ask that you provide further direction and/or approve the plan subject to funding that we are able to bring through the program over, over time. With me today, I have George Alves, who is a part-time consultant with the county supporting the fire protection side, and Steve Eubanks, a part-time consultant supporting the biomass utilization and air, air quality issues. A little bit about the history, and before I go to the chart, I'm going to sort of start off the chart. In honor about in 2005 or '06, you had a bunch of dedicated people that saw the need for this type of program. Among them, a former supervisor, Bruce Kranz, supervisor Jim Holmes, Tom Kristoff, who's the head of the Air Pollution Control District, and Dr. Rich Burton, our former, I guess he's former, does he finally retire? I hope he's still here listening. They were all a tremendous part of the development of this program, saw the need and saw the need to put together some resources to get moving forward. With that, your board in 2007 approved a strategic plan, adopted one, and asked us to go implement that, and they were coalescing around four goals that we still will carry forward, and we've added slightly to them, which these two gentlemen will talk about. The first was to attempt to reduce the risk of catastrophic wildfires within the county. The second was to protect the citizens and visitors from the consequences of those catastrophic wildfires, find one or more beneficial uses of the biomass waste forest product that's out there. And lastly, to improve the air quality, if possible. And then we had 12 objectives that supported those goals very well. Why worry about fire and biomass removal in Placer County? And I know that the, it's a little out of focus, but the red areas on there are where we've had significant fires and small fires. So you'll notice there's a big band in the middle that represents an area where a lot of people go in the Tahoe National Forest. It also represents our joint Middle Fork Project with Placer County Water Agency. We've had tremendous fires up there. There's some communities up there that are in fire danger, and then we've had some lower in, in the, in the urban areas as well. So that's why we're all worried about this stuff, and we just wanted to present the magnitude of what's happened in the last 10 years. The 10 before, the 10 before that, the 100 before that, all kind of look like this. It's, it's what fire does over and over. We were able to provide some sustainable partnerships and create them and keep them going, and you see a list of them. Some of them are grants we receive, but even after we received a grant, the organization, whether it's the Forest Service, the State Parks, the Energy Commission, are very much intimately involved in everything we do here in Placer County on both sides of the fence. They are, they are desirable of good outcomes, and they are very supportive of the types of things that we are moving forward. Funding was acquired. Obviously, we need funding to be able to do our jobs, and Supervisor Holmes caught me before the meeting and said, wow, I didn't realize we had $10.5 million. I didn't either, quite frankly, until I started adding this up in an Excel spreadsheet, and I had to do it three or four times going, those numbers must be off. That's an awful lot of money. But I hope we have put it to good use in support of your goals and continue to. There is still some money of that 10-5 left, and we are still moving forward with projects, which you'll see a little bit of. Projects completed. There were multiple things that were completed, which we call projects. The first one, biomass removal, pile burning avoidance, it says nine. Doesn't seem like a very big number. However, those nine projects represent thousands of, of piles of material that would have been burned in this area, and we would have, we would have had to breathe those toxins and emissions that come out of it. There, some were small, some were quite large. In addition, we did seven fuel reduction, fuel break projects around the county. We have, even though we only have at this moment one biomass-to-power facility, we have five separate projects related to that that we received grant funds from. We had three chipper projects we received money for. We have one biomass-to-transplantation-fuel potential project, which I'll talk about in a moment. We did a health impact assessment with, to understand how valuable or not valuable the biomass facility might be in an area. And then we had a high, I didn't know what else to call this, a high-fire-risk plant abatement. We tore out some nasty plants near Highway 80, but it's a significant item that's up and coming as, as a reason to get rid of a fire plant near highways, because it starts quite a bit of fires. And lastly, on this note, we also received, along with our partners at Air Pollution Control District, the Forest Service, and SBI, a United States EPA Clean Air Award for our work in 2010 of those pile burning avoidance and the reduced emissions that were, that the area was subjected to. Little bit about the projects, just some pictures, some fuel reductions and chipper operations, which have been common in the county for years and years. We tried to step that up. We are looking at a biomass-to-power projects with a potential facility at Cabin Creek, which as you know, we're progressing forward on. We're not there yet. And we've got a new project that's finally come to fruition, which is about biomass-to-fuel. You may have, may or may not have seen me driving around one of our, our DPW's natural gas vehicles. I'm the test driver, in addition to my other duties. I'm trying to figure out how well it runs on regular natural gas that's provided to us, and we have a partner that's going to be distilling, is the best way I know how to put it, from forest biomass, biomass waste to something called biomethane, which is going to go in that vehicle, and for a couple of months, I'm going to test drive that to understand if there are any functional differences with that fuel. Of course, it'll be tested before it goes into our engine, but it's a, it's a cooperative agreement with a company called G4, the California Energy Commission, and DPW is assisting out greatly in this project as well. So that's what's new for this year. And now I'm going to introduce George Alves, and let him take the next couple of slides, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. George Alves, Consultant and Placer County Fire Mitigation Coordinator. So I wanted to start off with a slide that basically represents the activity over the last 12 years within the county. Two axes there. The blue represents the total quantity of fires, and this is in CAL FIRE responsibility areas, and then the red on the right is dollars in damage created by those fires. So the message I'm trying to give here is, although we see a decrease in the fire activity over the last 12 years, the potential for catastrophic wildfire still exists. If you look at that red band, it's, it's very obvious there. You know, there's two fires that had the largest impact. 2009 was the Gladding Fire, I'm sorry, 2008 was the Gladding Fire in Lincoln, 1,000 acres, 16 homes damaged or burned. And then the 49 Fire in Auburn in 2009, 300 acres, 26 homes, $25 million in damage. So when you look at the total here, and we've got about $32 million in damage over that time period, if you take out those two major instances, we're looking at about $1 million a year in damage. And this isn't cost, this isn't mitigation cost or firefighting cost, this is the actual damage to the, the homes and the areas. And then with those two fires together, we're looking at about $25 million, so very significant. So again, the message here is, we're doing, there's a lot of activity, a lot of work doing on fire mitigation and prevention, but when the big one hits, it can be very catastrophic.
Chairman. George, I think you misspoke. I think you said there were 26 homes. I believe there were 62 homes and one other.
I'm sorry, you are right. Correct. Yes.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Onto my last slide. So getting into, as it states there, the basic goal is to reduce the risk of catastrophic wildfire through coordinated planning, development, and implementation of wildfire prevention strategies. You know, we, when you look at this particular plan, it focuses on fire-safe organization development and coordination, coordinated planning, and defensible space. Within these three areas, there are seven specific topics. They include 19 short-term strategies and 16 long-term strategies. There's a very detailed strategy put together within this document to address fire mitigation and prevention. At the bullets, the primary focus, the first one is the alliance and partnership growth. Since the release of the 2007 strategic plan, the Fire Safe Alliance, Placer County Fire Safe Alliance, the complete title, as a coordinated effort, we've seen a significant increase in the participation, not only from the core team, which is CAL FIRE, Bureau of Rock Formation, Bureau of Land Management, U.S. Forest Service, and Placer County OES, but all the local fire safe councils, public agencies, land management agencies. There's been a significant growth and a lot of activity, so we're really getting some traction and looking forward to the opportunities to expand those organizations over the coming period of this particular document. We added a fourth fire safe council in 2010. That was the Greater Lincoln Fire Safe Council. That was after the Gladding Fire and the activities there. After that, we now represent, or the fire safe councils represent the majority of the Western Slope, which is where the primary focus on most of the documents that we live by. Our goal is to continue to strengthen those organizations and bring more to the table. We're out there soliciting, trying to get individual groups, companies, PG&E, insurance agencies, a lot of those agencies that can really contribute to successful fire mitigation and prevention activities. The second item, looking at prevention efforts. This strategic plan, as I pointed out, is really kind of the guiding document and provides the strategies for implementation of projects in the 2013 Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That was a document you saw and approved earlier this year. Brand-new document, well, an update of, of the 2007 document. There's a community, I'm sorry, a local hazard mitigation plan, which is another document that will also be updated here in the near future. That covers all the counties, cities, fire protection districts, areas within the county on fire mitigation, and all of the other hazards. So the objective there is to bring all these groups together, continuing to focus on those actions, use those documents to really put together a good plan. We're actually, at the alliance, we're taking these documents, consolidating them, and trying to have an action plan that's specific to those actions, to make sure all those organizations are consistently working within those documents. So we're having a strategic action plan that takes those, rolls them all into one, that gives us a simpler, smaller document that really gives us a focus. Funding is another key item, obviously needed to be able to achieve the majority of these projects. When you look at the Community Wildfire Protection Plan alone, between the four fire safe councils, there are 42 fuel management projects and 10 community outreach and education programs. The majority of those, if not all, are funded through grants and outside resources. So that's our effort there, is to be able to identify, look at the existing resources, trying to identify ways to get additional funding from them, and then go out and find additional resources and try to leverage those to increase the amount of dollars that we have to put into these projects. These are local community projects driven by the local fire safe councils and communities, so they're very important, and they're the ones that'll try to achieve those projects and get funding to do that. Last item is public education and community outreach. You know, the fire safe councils, the alliance, all of the fire... You know, the fire safe councils, the alliance, all of the fire activities, agencies are very involved in public outreach, but there's a lot more to do. The agencies attend a lot of local meetings, try to get that information out, go to home shows, fairs, local community items, but you know, we really need to improve on that. We need to get more out there. One of the actions we're taking is we're already in the process of developing a community calendar, so we're going out and finding out where are all these meetings. We've got 14 max. We've got a lot of other agency meetings, and they are applicable and are interested in fire mitigation. So we're going to identify those, put together a game plan, making sure that those individual organizations are represented at those things to make sure that the information is put out. County has provided funding for public education material, and we'll continue to do that and get the word out to make sure everybody's working on the same plan.
Thanks, George. Steve will now finish up and we'll get questions at the end. Thank you.
Which ones? Hmm? Okay. Good morning. My name's Steve Eubanks. I also work with the county as a consultant, have for several years. Before I get started on my topic, I just, on a side, I wanted to build on something that Brett mentioned earlier, and that was a commendation for the insight that the county showed several years ago in starting these programs. I think some of you have heard me say that, you know, due to my contacts nationally with the Forest Service and others, Placer County is unique. Placer County is a leader nationally because of the insight and all of that that the county showed back, I guess, in 19, well, it was 2007, even actually before 2007. And that's, you know, the continued support of the Board of Supervisors and continued support for the programs really has helped that, and I think you ought to feel very proud of that and proud of the county's efforts. So I'm going to talk about biomass utilization to begin with. I think all of you know that excess biomass is a product of various forest management and fire hazard reduction projects, and a lot of the excess biomass traditionally has been open burned. And basically, the county program is looking at and continuing to look at ways to reduce that open burning and make excess biomass a product instead of a problem and something with value. And so the future focus really is looking at something Brett talked a lot about. You saw that slide with all the partners shown on it. You saw how many dollars came in from grants. There would be a continuation in this strategic plan for building on those particular aspects of the program. County has also done several projects, particularly with the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit, looking at ways to improve processing and handling of biomass. Some of you know that probably the biggest barrier to the utilization of biomass is economics in the terms of the transportation, processing, and the handling of the biomass. So looking at ways to improve that and improve the economics really is important. Undertaking a stewardship agreement with the Tahoe National Forest would be a key item. There's already a master stewardship agreement with the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit that allows cooperative utilization and management of various projects creating the biomass and making it more economical to handle the biomass. Assisting in the development of bioenergy, and a real key one, the partnership with the Air Quality Management District, Air Pollution Control District here is very unique. Having a county and an air pollution control district working together, again, is one of those unique features of this program. And the continuing to work with them on the development and implementation of various biomass protocols for carbon credits. And this is related to the state's legislation, AB 32, for carbon capping. Continuing to explore potential uses that support business development, and that would be looking at other kinds of products for biomass, posts, poles, various kinds of materials that can be made from biomass. And of course, continuing support for the Cabin Creek facility, which is a real key issue. Cabin Creek is one of those foot-in-the-door kinds of projects that has the potential of assisting many other communities in distributed energy, and it's a very important one. Air quality improvement is really an offshoot of both wildfire reduction and the biomass utilization. And a basic goal here is to continue support for improving air quality. So if you can reduce wildfires, if you can increase utilization of biomass instead of open burning it, that's a real boon to air quality improvement. So there's a very, you know, as George mentioned in his, you know, we're hitting the highlights here in terms of the various program goals. There are many more in the strategic plan, but these are some of the ones that we think are the most important. But supporting the Pollution Control District research in measuring air quality effects of biomass energy, and that's looking at, the program that Brett mentioned that the county and APCD and others won an award for nationally is related to this, but doing more of that kind of work, which is ongoing, and looking at just how much air quality improvement is there from utilizing the biomass energy in a, or utilizing the biomass in an energy facility in lieu of open burning. That's really key information, not only for this county, but for others. Seeking and cooperating on projects that implement biomass-to-energy protocol and biochar protocol. The APCD has already developed with the assistance of Placer County, a protocol for carbon credits for utilization of the biomass in an energy facility. A typical byproduct of some of the biomass facilities is biochar, which is a soil supplement. And that in itself, it has many carbon benefits, and so there's a protocol being developed for that. Supporting the APCD in quantifying carbon reduction benefits that accrue from reduction of wildfire. As we mentioned before, wildfires, you know, have a huge carbon input into the atmosphere. If you can find a way to reduce that, and we have, there are forest management projects that do reduce wildfires significantly. The key is trying to figure out how to quantify that reduction of carbon and qualify then for carbon credits. And that's a very complicated and long-term project, but it's one that's ongoing, and we see that as a significant benefit, again, not only for Placer County, but for national interests, and it would be a first in the United States. And one of the limitations on the implementation of AB 32 has been on the implementation regulations that were adopted by CARB. Placer County and the APCD are working to overcome some of those implementation regulation shortcomings and hopefully make the use of these carbon credit protocols more effective. So Brett?
Thank you, George and Steve. And then just finally, we're happy to entertain any questions and further future direction you'd like us to take.
Any board questions? Jennifer?
I would, I don't really have any questions today, but I'd like to commend you all for your work on this. I think it really is a very important project that the county and the Air Pollution Control District have taken on. I know in our meetings, when we go back to DC, the response that we hear from the folks back there is you guys are, you know, really creating some cutting-edge stuff here that truly will be a model, not just in California, but throughout the county. And I think really based on that, I just strongly encourage us to really continue down the path of the discussions relating to Cabin Creek. I think it's just critically important that we follow through on that plan and make sure that we do create that on-the-ground model that is replicable for other jurisdictions and, you know, private business to replicate. That was really our intent, to create a model that could be replicated. And so again, just thank you for the work you do. I think the wildfire protection and biomass utilization program is effective. I think that 10 and a half million dollars, even though it was a figure that may have caught you by surprise, is really money well spent, particularly, I think, as we move toward seeing some impacts of climate change, including reduced rainfall and snowfall within our forests. And this is going to be one very effective tool that gets us to managing our wildlands better. So just thank you.
To Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This staff report is amazing. You know, we've done this for seven or eight years, and when you finally sit down and read what you've accomplished, it's, you know, very, you have to sit back and be proud of ourselves. We've talked about the award we got from the Environmental Protection Agency, went back, and that's because of our relationship with the Air Pollution Control District and SBI Industries. We went back there and the head of the EPA, who's Lisa McCarthy, now the head, gave us, presented us with that award. And then here in May, we, last May, I think it was May or spring, we went to DC for a peer review from the Department of Energy, which is a requirement for our, you know, funding, the grant funding that we've got. And we received the highest rating of all the presenters there. How many, 30 presenters?
In our class, yes.
And the nice thing about it was that this was the last day and we were the second to last to present, and the review panel was very, very, was kind of astounded about the process that we had made. And I had people come up to me afterwards and say, boy, you guys are doing the right thing. This is, you know, we sit around and wait for the federal government or the state government to do something. This is an example of local government instituting a program and putting hard work into it, and now it's getting national recognition. And it's something that we should be very proud of, and I commend you, and I think we should move forward with this as best we can. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Any comments from the public?
I wanted to point out that Supervisor Montgomery and Supervisor Holmes sit on our biomass policy team, and they will continue to crack the whip on us as they have done to the last year.
Supervisor Wagan had a comment.
I just wanted to add, in terms of future directions and observations, I think I started with a great idea, which I have absolutely no input on, so it wasn't my idea, no credit for that, but I think, like with many of the programs in the county where we've had extraordinary success, it happened because we started with a great idea and didn't let the complexity of the circumstances defer us. So when you talk about the collaboration that's involved, in many instances, that prevents people from even entering into a challenge like this. But for us, I think it's always been a great strength, so I want to see that continue. I just, again, accolade to the people who were more responsible for getting this up and running, but I think it's a great kudo for the county and reflective of the kind of thing that we can do as being sort of the managing partner of a great idea because we're smaller, we're more nimble, but we can bring together these other players that are critically important and not be deterred by a lot of excuses for not going forward, but looking at the bigger picture, focusing on that, and making it work.
And I want to point out also that I probably bugged almost every department in the county, and they've been very supportive, so I didn't mean, sound otherwise, but we have a lot of internal people who help make this project work as well.
All right. Thank you, Brett. Any comments from the public on this particular item? Great. Then I'll go ahead and bring this back to the board. They've asked for either direction or approval.
Mr. Chair, I approve the strategic plan for the wildfire protection and biomass utilization program.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Great. Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and take up our added department item 5B.
I made a 9:40 timed item.
You want me to go that? Okay. Oh, apologize. We'll take up our 9:40 timed item, County Executive Economic Development Hearing on TEFRA Issuance of Revenue Bonds.
Do you want me to open up the hearing now?
Yeah. I'm going to go ahead and open up this hearing. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Members of the Board, Dave Snyder, Director of Economic Development. Today, we have two actions requested of the board. The first is to conduct a public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, known as TEFRA, in connection with the proposed issuance in one or more of a series of bonds by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, a joint exercise of powers, authority, and public entity of the state of California, in an amount not to exceed $23.5 million. These bonds in connection with the proposed financing for the acquisition and rehabilitation of three senior multifamily rental housing projects by Preservation Partners Management Group, Inc. in Placer County. They include the 50-unit Auburn Villa in Auburn, the 67-unit Lynn Rock Senior Community in Rockland, and a 67-unit Canyon View Senior Apartments in Colfax. The second item is to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of bonds by California statewide communities for the benefit of Preservation Partners Management Group, a California corporation, a public benefit corporation, or subsidiary or affiliate thereof, to provide for the financing of the project, and such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the IRS Code, and California Government Code, Section 6500. A quick note, I have with me this morning, I believe Scott Carper of California statewide communities, and he's here to answer any questions if they come up. Quickly, Preservation Partners Management Group requests that California statewide communities serve as the municipal issuer of the bonds, and again, that's in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $23.5 million, and these are for the projects that I've previously noted. The county's been requested to conduct this TEFRA public hearing and approve the issuance of these bonds for the purposes of federal law. The bonds are limited obligations of California statewide communities payable solely by Preservation Partners Management Group and will not be direct obligations of California statewide communities, Placer County, or any member of California statewide communities. California statewide communities was formed 25 years ago. The county's been a member since 1988. And again, the purpose of this TEFRA hearing is to receive public comment, request approval of the financing as required by Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended. Bond Counsel Oric Harrington and Sutcliffe LLP has properly noticed the hearing and has assisted in preparing the board packet this morning. So with that, I recommend we conduct the public hearing and approve the resolution.
All right. Well, we'll now conduct the public hearing. Is there anyone, members of the public, that want to comment on this item for the issuance of the TEFRA revenue bonds? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring this back to the board.
Approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion passes. Great. Thank you very much, Dave. We will now move on to our added item 5B, Community Development Resource Agency Planning Services Division Interim Urgency Ordinance prohibiting certain uses within the Tahoe City, Kings Beach, and North State Line community plan boundaries. Mr. Thompson and Michael Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an interim urgency ordinance that staff is bringing forward for the board's consideration. It would prohibit certain uses within the Tahoe City, Kings Beach, and North State Line community plan boundaries. Paul Thompson, Assistant Director with the Tahoe Office of the Agency, will be making today's presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Thompson with the Community Development Resource Agency, here to present this item. This item is before your board, is a proposal for an interim emergency ordinance for certain uses within existing community plans, areas of Tahoe City, Kings Beach, and North State Line, which are currently makeup the TRPA Town Center areas within Placer County. The interim emergency ordinance would place a prohibition on specific uses until the updates of the community plan have been adopted. The proposed uses would include hospitals, daycare centers, preschools, churches, schools, business and vocational, schools, colleges, schools, kindergarten through secondary, animal husbandry services, collection stations, single-family residences, service stations, auto repairing services, and contract construction services. As your board is aware, redevelopment of the town centers has been identified as a high priority in the TRPA's updated regional plan. In Placer County, town centers of Tahoe City, Kings Beach, and North State Line have been targeted as receiving areas for development. high priority in the TRPA's updated regional plan. In Placer County, town centers of Tahoe City, Kings Beach, and North State Line have been targeted as receiving areas for development in a manner that concentrates densities within the town centers to create vibrant communities while fostering environmental threshold gain in the basin. Therefore, redevelopment with appropriate land uses within the town centers of Placer County is critical for the revitalization, to foster sustainable communities, and to remove development from environmentally sensitive lands within the basin. Placer County appreciates the values and values, the considerable input that the area, plan area teams have provided in the community plan update visioning process. With the visioning efforts complete to date, the county also recognizes the importance of ensuring that the community's vision for the town center areas is reflected in the area plans in order to realize the built environment. That said, with the establishment of the interim urgency ordinance, the Tahoe Basin stakeholders and residents can be assured that Placer County is committed to honoring the community's investment in visioning, area plan, and community plan policy framework efforts. As the county moves forward with the community plan update process, staff has determined that certain uses currently allowed in special areas, districts within the Tahoe City, Kings Beach, and North State Line community plans are not in keeping with the visioning efforts of the area teams, may conflict with the TRPA regional plan, and the Placer County Tahoe Basin community plan policy framework. As a result, the county has concluded that these land uses have the potential to impact the public health, safety, and welfare of residents of the North Lake Tahoe region. Therefore, pursuant to the Government Code, Section 65858A, staff is proposing an interim urgency ordinance prohibiting certain uses until the compatibility of such uses within the town centers can be appropriately addressed in the community plan update process. If the interim ordinance is adopted, it would become effective immediately and remain in effect for 45 days. The Bay, the board, excuse me, may extend the interim ordinance for an additional period of 10 months and 15 days, and subsequently for one year. The interim ordinance will authorize the county to refuse to process new applications for the term of the ordinance and to focus on finalizing the updates to the Tahoe City, Kings Beach, and North State Line community plans that are currently underway. Updates to the community plan will, updates to the community plan, plans will include review of existing and allowed land uses for compatibility, as well as developing criteria and standards for such uses that may be appropriate in light of the character and purpose of the regional plan requirements for town centers within Placer County. With that said, staff recommends that your board adopt the interim urgency ordinance as set forth in Attachment 1, subject to the findings in the staff report. The staff's available for questions.
Great, thank you, Paul. Jennifer?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yes, thank you. I would ask that, given that this meeting was not publicly noticed in any newspapers, that it was not set as a timed item so that people traveling an hour and a half could come down and rely upon being able to have their voices heard, and that frankly, that it was not released to the public as an agendized item on our website until Friday afternoon, that we postpone any consideration of this item to a nearer future meeting date in Tahoe, possibly as early as our next agendized meeting, which is January 21st, or call a special meeting. That's the motion.
Okay, what is the will of the board?
I'll second that. This is a tough one. We've got the Ferrari family that I feel is kind of the heart and soul of Kings Beach, but we also have community members that have worked tirelessly bringing this vision forward. And now at this late date, we're asked to stop. So I would support that. I would actually have a special meeting as soon as possible. That's my recommendation, and I support Supervisor Montgomery's motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jerry, do you want to?
I was just going to comment that the provision in the Government Code authorizes these emergency interim ordinance as an A section and a B section. The A section is the urgency section that allows the board to adopt this ordinance at this meeting without a notice and public hearing. The B section allows the ordinance, the interim ordinance to be adopted after a notice public hearing. And I suggest that the board, if that's what the board is intending to do, that they table this so that staff can notice the public hearing. And considering that the next board meeting is scheduled for Tahoe on the 21st, I think we have enough time to provide the 10-day published notice for that hearing.
I don't believe it's actually scheduled for Tahoe on the 21st unless I've missed something.
There is a bit of confusion about whether that next meeting was going to be on the 21, in Tahoe on the 21st, but what I heard the secondor suggest was a special meeting. So if that were the board's preference, we could explore that possibility.
Well, if, the 21st is a, any Tuesday is a regular board meeting.
And I would just, my preference is to have that meeting as soon as possible because I do think this matter is of great importance to the folks in Tahoe. I want to be able that, you know, without presupposing any particular outcome to this, I want to make sure that people have the opportunity to weigh in because I've heard from dozens of people on both sides of this. And I think it's critically important that we allow the public process, and in order to do that, we really need to hold this meeting in Tahoe. So thank you for your second, Supervisor Holmes.
Okay, with that said, we have a motion and a second. For me? Supervisor Yuler?
Yeah, I would ask the board's indulgence on the motion that we actually entertained comments from the public prior to us actually taking action on this motion, knowing that we're now not considering under this motion actually deciding whether or not to adopt the ordinance, but simply whether or not to put off the board's action.
Okay, that's fair. Any comments from the public on what we're about to do with regards to suspending the hearing on this?
DC Larrabee, founder, head of lower school, Tahoe Expedition Academy. We came down here to object to this ordinance. We're not exactly sure where it's coming from. I'm not sure if you guys have any background on the school itself. We're a primary and secondary school. We're in our third year of business, so we're an established school. And we serve about 130 students right now, ranging from kindergarten through ninth grade. We're working on developing a high school. That's part of the vision of developing this particular piece of property as our future campus. We need the space. It's a world-class facility. It's going to be a world-class facility once we're done with it. We have a pretty lofty vision of achieving human potential, which I know sounds extremely lofty. We really are focused on global outreach. It's not just a local Kings Beach community thing. We think that we're going to provide many, many economic and social benefits to the Kings Beach community, but it's a little bit bigger than that. It definitely is going to be a global outreach school. We envision students, young and old, from all around the world coming to Lake Tahoe to learn. We'll be partnering with governmental and non-governmental agencies, higher education facilities such as UC Davis, probably Cal, to support education in the basin. That's specific to Lake Tahoe, specific to the environment. I think that there's probably a number of people here who would like to speak to this. I won't take up too, too much of your time, but you probably want a little bit more background on the genesis of how this all came to be. Just kind of give you a little background on that. The Ferrari family and the school started to talk about this in the spring of 2013. We worked together to negotiate a letter of intent that had all the terms of the agreement. We worked to create a purchase and sale agreement in July based upon what we had put together in the LOI, and then we got wet signatures on this purchase and sale agreement prior to November. So we're pretty deep here, and we've done a lot of due diligence. We've done traffic studies, asbestos studies, noise studies, environmental studies, pretty much any kind of study that you can possibly think of. We're going through the county checklist. We're trying to do every single thing correctly. We've been very transparent about our process, which is one of the reasons why I think we're here right now. I thought that that was the right thing to do. So it has been very short notice. We just found out about this probably a couple hours after you guys. We were not informed directly. We just kind of heard through the grapevine that this was happening. We have hired legal counsel, and it would be great if Greg could get up here and he could speak a little bit about our side and he could articulate why we are objecting to this ordinance.
Well, I think at this point, we're not, we're not having a hearing on this particular item. We're just talking about holding it over to a special meeting up in Tahoe. So I don't think that's really necessary. If there's anybody that wants to speak to that issue, please come up and go ahead and speak to that. But I really don't think it's appropriate for us to start taking testimony with regards to whether or not you're for it or against it at this point. So anyone have any comments on holding the meeting over? Please come up and to the podium, identify who you are, and tell us whether or not you're okay with that.
Are you asking specifically if I'm okay with a special meeting?
Yes.
Is a special meeting an urgency ordinance?
Yes, it's on this particular item, basically what we're doing.
Well, I have a, I have a problem with that.
This item would be noticed in the published, in the newspaper, and a public hearing would be held at either a regular or a special meeting in Tahoe as soon as the public notice would allow. There's a 10-day requirement and notice on the public hearing.
I guess my concern here is that, that we're using an ordinance in here that's for public safety, and that's why there's an urgency to it. And nowhere in any of the documents or any of the readings I've heard has anybody mentioned public safety. So there are no public safety issues with this. Now, whether you're for the school or against the school or the planning, it's really not an issue for this meeting or for that special meeting. There is a due diligence process that goes through, and those are the times to discuss those things. To put in an ordinance here because you don't particularly like that and claim that it's public safety is really scary. It's really scary as a landowner with rights in this county. And I think legally, you have to be very careful here because it is a big issue. There's a lot of money involved here, and to claim it's a public safety issue that it needs to be involved, you know, decided immediately is wrong. And there's no toxic weight coming out of anywhere right now. There's no safety issues right now, whether you want the school to be there or not. There's a public process for that, and it will go through that. And it's just a little scary to have this special meeting with the ordinance that I think has nothing relevant to what's going on here.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Steve Rubin. I'm a board member of the Tahoe Expedition Academy and also a landowner in this county and a taxpayer.
And again, we're not talking about, you know, for anybody else that comes up after this, we're not talking about whether or not you're for or against the school. We're talking about whether or not you're for or against a special meeting on this issue, all right?
Right.
Everybody understand the rules of the game here.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to say, that I don't think this is the place to discuss whether you're for the, for it or not. It's whether this ordinance is, has, can legally be used to put a temporary.
And at the hearing that we have, you will have the right to bring whoever you want, whether it be a legal counsel or what have you, to discuss that particular issue, but we're not going to discuss it here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else would like to comment just on holding a special meeting on this item?
Good day, I'm Bill Radakowitz, and I own commercial property and a residence in Kings Beach, and I am all for your holding this meeting, holding it over to Tahoe residents so they can provide their input. And so I'm for your.
Thank you, sir.
Having the meeting there.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, Chairman Duran, members of the board. My name is Greg Gatto, and I'm here on behalf of the Tahoe Expeditionary Academy. I would like to thank Supervisor Montgomery for giving us the opportunity to continue this. We would like to submit written objections. I will not go into the merits of those now. I just would ask the board to look long and hard. There were several very complex legal issues involved with this ordinance, including TRPA procedures, existing case law that has very specific ramifications with regard to this ordinance. And I thank you again, I do support the motion to continue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ferrari?
I'd just like to make a quick comment. I'm Dave Ferrari from the Crown. We've all come down here today, but it feels like, I know there's people that are probably on the other side of this, and they're not here. I mean, it just feels like our time is valuable as well, and that somehow some people must have known that this was going to happen here today, and I guess maybe we could have been informed as well. It's, I mean, we're, and I would like to have the board and staff cognizant, we're running an ongoing business. We have summer, we have huge decisions to make. I mean, we just had Christmas, you know, the last Christmas, we're selling our family home for 60 years. It's not easy, and so that we expedite this thing and make a decision and move forward. But it just feels like there's some information that we didn't, we didn't get, so here we are.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. Any other questions? Or comments?
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Frashay-Karen, and I'm on the Board of Directors with Tahoe Expedition Academy. I do support the moving forward to explore some more information to be presented on the benefits of the school, but the question I have is how is this meeting going to be presented? Is it, you know, what would be the terminology around this? And the reason I present that question, is it going to be, I guess that's, I'll leave it there, is what would be the?
I'll leave that to our legal counsel to define what.
It'll be noticed similar to the way it was noticed today, but except the fact that that notice will be published in the newspaper 10 days before, and it'll be scheduled for a public hearing.
Okay.
At a specific time and date.
Okay, what will the title of that meeting be?
It will be the consideration of an interim ordinance.
Okay.
It won't be an urgency ordinance because that process follows what we have today. It'll be the notice public hearing interim ordinance, but the substance will be the same.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Mark Fers. I'm Chair of the Board of Tahoe Expedition Academy. Could you please state again what it would be, what it would be called at this meeting?
It will be a notice public hearing on the, a proposal to the board to adopt an interim ordinance to.
So it would get rid of.
To prohibit certain uses pending the completion of the community plans in the Kings Beach, Tahoe City, and North State Line areas.
So it would get rid of the immediacy, the urgency of the, of what's currently before you. Is that correct?
It has the same requirement for public safety, health, and welfare.
Okay.
That the urgency ordinance would have.
It would have the same requirement for public health and safety.
That same requirement is there because it is an interim ordinance that will take effect after, immediately after the public hearing, if it's adopted.
Okay, thank you, that was my concern.
Anyone else, before I bring this back to the board? Okay?
Before we vote, I'd like to make a quick comment.
Robert?
Thanks, Jack. I think we have a very provocative question in front of us, and my experience is that taking a little bit more time and particularly hearing the issue in proximity to where the impacts and the issues are going to be felt, I think is well worth it, so I'm going to vote for it.
There's an old saying in my field of profession of law, you know, short timelines don't make for good law. So I do, in what capacity I can, agree that it should hold over to a time where folks can have an opportunity to present their pros and cons, and their ideas, and their concerns, and their concepts.
And one other issue that is similar are the two subsections. The interim ordinance that's adopted after a public hearing, just like the interim ordinance that would have been adopted today, are only good for 45 days, and then require a public hearing to extend them after that.
Yeah, the question here, you know, for me, is even though you can do something, it's whether or not you should. And obviously, you know, this is a huge issue with ramifications that go far beyond, you know, what, what a lot of people think that they, that they normally would for both the county, for both the residents, for both the landowner. So it's real important that we give everybody the opportunity to say what they need to say. So I will go ahead and bring that back to the board. We have a motion, I think, in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any abstention? Any no votes? Go ahead and move on.
Chairman Duran, before we move off that topic, we would, I would also like to encourage county staff and all the other associated parties and folks who are involved in this, tween now and that, as soon as possible, scheduled meeting. between now and that as soon as possible scheduled meeting, to focus your efforts on having conversations directly, do the public outreach, and really, you know, maybe work together to try to identify potential solutions in advance of our meeting. I would rather not have this come back to the board because a solution is arrived at, rather than this come back to the board. So I would strongly encourage staff to work with all parties to make that happen.
Thanks Supervisor. And with that being said, we're going to take up item number six, Facility Services, and we'll take up our 10 o'clock item after that. Auburn Animal Shelter Project Number 4639, Construction Management Services. Mr. Unholz.
Good morning Chairman Duran, members of the board. The item before you this morning is a recommendation to approve and authorize the chairman to execute an agreement with Vanner Construction Management to provide construction management services for the Auburn Animal Shelter Project in an amount not to exceed $1,327,200 in previously budgeted net county costs. In March 2013, an RFP was issued for CM services. Six proposals were received, the top four firms were interviewed, and Vanner scored the highest. Staff negotiated the consultant services agreement before you this morning. Vanner will provide consultant services from the RFP process through design, construction, commissioning, and warranty. They will serve as an extension of the county's project team to assist us in ensuring that the successful design-build team deliver a project that's in complete compliance with the RFP. The kickoff meeting for the proposal phase of the RFP process is this Thursday, January 9th. So this is in particularly good timing. To get them involved, to help ensure that those designs that are proposed and developed through the confidential design process meet the RFP, meet the design, we can evaluate systems. Vanner has the depth to pull in specialty consultants to evaluate systems and their lifecycle costs. Vanner will also coordinate quality assurance and materials inspections, stormwater compliance, and labor compliance. In order to proceed, it is requested that your board approve and authorize the chairman to execute the consultant agreement with Vanner Construction Management in an amount not to exceed $1,327,200. These services are anticipated and budgeted, sufficient funding is appropriated in the project account. This contract is expected to run a duration through February 2017, so to take care of the post-construction project, post-construction items. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Supervisor Holmes?
We've used Vanner before, that sounds familiar. We've used them on construction management.
They are currently on the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility.
Yeah, okay.
And...
And they will be involved in the design, they'll be working with the RFP?
They'll, well, no, we'll be working with the three teams that your board approved at your last meeting. They will help us evaluate and guide those proposed designs to make sure that they're, because at the end of the day, and the end of that process, we want to have three designs that meet our requirements, and we will be choosing the best one. So our goal is to use their expertise along with our staff to guide those design proposals to make sure that they're in compliance, and that we, that they basically serve usefulness and benefit the county. Because, again, with the stipend, we can use any of those good design features of the non-successful proposer.
Okay, good, thank you.
And any other questions from the board? Supervisor Ullrich.
As you're aware, Rob, there has been, rightly so, a good amount of public conversation and scrutiny over the discussed costs associated with this project. I think it would be very helpful as, if board approves this action, Vanner steps into this role, as we move this process forward, to have one of Vanner's responsibilities when they're evaluating the proposals as they come forward from the three different contractors, to report back to our board in the public forum to discuss the kinds of things that are the primary cost drivers associated with having to construct a facility like this, so that we are providing as much transparency as possible to the public, so that they understand what are the operational, well, not the operational, but construction constraints that result in the kind of cost per square foot that we're looking at for this kind of a facility. I think hearing it from somebody with their level of expertise in various public sector construction projects would be very helpful for us, for the public.
And again, as they will be working as an extension of our staff, they won't be actually scoring the proposals...
No, I understand.
But they will definitely be providing input into us. I think that's a great idea. I think we can bring that back as part of our recommendation to award to the most successful, the top-scoring firm.
Yeah, because, I mean, on its face, as every board member here has expressed on its face, what these facilities cost is just astounding. And so, a deeper dive into the numbers, I think would be helpful for all of us, as well as for the folks who are ultimately paying the tab for this.
I think the better you all understand it, and the better the public understands it, we will support the project.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Rob, I did have a question, and this, since we're talking about cost, specifically the 1.3. I mean, can you kind of give me a little bit more context in how you, how we arrived at that, at that cost, what some of the responsibilities are going to be? Because, you know, I want to make sure that the public does understand that, what level of involvement that Vanner is going to have over, in addition to helping us select and do...
Correct.
What I'm assuming is some value engineering on this, how, you know, how we can justify $1.3 million to have someone basically oversee this process?
Well, and again, the, I want to emphasize that the responsibility to oversee the project exists, is with my staff, and Vanner, we're bringing Vanner on as an extension of that team. During the design process, there will be two staff, and that's through about four months, and there are the six all-day confidential design meetings, and then the deliberation and discussion associated. There will be two staff members from Vanner with extensive design-build and construction experience, helping, assisting us through that. As we choose the highest-scoring firm to go forward with, the design will have to be finished through design development and construction documents. The staffing will reduce a bit on that. The principal from Vanner, principal project director, will have less, as the project goes forward, less involvement. And then, our direct project manager with Vanner will be rolling up his sleeves with us, evaluating the design as it's developed, and then coordinating inspections, going out and doing inspections, quality assurance inspections, making sure that as it's constructed, it is complying with the requirements of the RFP.
Sure. So, and just to kind of summarize what you just said, I mean, normally in a regular construction-type project, you have a contractor that is pretty much responsible for all of these activities. Because we're doing design-build, we're taking on a larger role, correct?
Well, yes, because it's design-build, and because it's a county project, we're there to ensure that we get what we contracted for...
Right.
...at the end of the day. And this carries clear through, as I said, February 2017, which is through the warranty period, commissioning, and post-occupancy. They're also going to be compiling the project documentation using Constructware, that's a software by Autodesk that Capital Improvements Division uses in our project management. That will allow easy retrieval of documents, we've used it on the jail, be able to go back and get subject-specific information should we need it later, and really, really establish the project record.
Great, thank you. All right, have you submitted this to the board for approval now?
With that, our recommendation is for your board to approve.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those, oh, I'm sorry. Anyone in the audience want to talk about, or have a comment on this item? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Great. We'll move on to our other timed item, our 10 o'clock timed item, which is 2014 Boards and Commissions. Is Holly going to kind of...
I'm going to introduce it for you.
Oh, okay, great, okay.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, congratulations. Holly Heinzon with the County Executive Office. The item before you today is a discussion related to appointment of board members and their designees to committees and commissions of the county. There are about 56 committees and commissions that each of you sit on one or another, or your designated staff. With that, this provides an opportunity for you to discuss any changes that might be envisioned, and provide direction to staff to come back on the 21st to confirm those appointments. Your aides have all had an opportunity to review these appointments, and may have discussed them with you, so I think they had some good edits and changes, and those have been incorporated. So with that, we're happy to take any direction you might have on this item.
Board direction? Board comment? Supervisor Montgomery?
My comment is that I'm perfectly happy to continue serving on the committees and commissions upon, you know, which I currently sit. I know that new this year is the SED Corp. board, and that is a vacant position. Is that the only vacant position at this point?
That would be the only one that actually became, is a new and became vacant, right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the others have just sat there, to be perfectly honest. I mean, there may be one that we haven't actively attended, but I, in terms of a clear vacancy, that would be the one.
Okay, so, since I was sort of the impetus behind us rejoining SED Corp., depending on who you talked to, I would be perfectly happy to represent the county on that seat, unless there's another supervisor who has a burning desire to do so.
Excellent.
It looks like you're it.
I'm perfectly happy to let you do it.
Any other comments on, or...
I was wondering if the Placer Nevada Wastewater Authority is still something that we need to move forward to keep, or should we...
I think it'd be a good time to...
Flush it?
Yes.
[laughing].
But it is still a currently existing committee, so we'd need an appointment to that.
Oh, okay.
Until it winds up its affairs.
Flushing itself.
So how do we wind it up?
That's something that that committee needs to take up, at probably its next meeting.
Okay.
Are you on that committee, Robert?
Yeah.
Are you on that committee?
Yeah.
Okay, well, sounds like you have the handle.
[laughing]. Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have no problem with the committees that I serve on, but, you know, a lot of the public thinks we just come here every other week, sit down and make decisions, but as I count up all the committees that I'm involved with, there's about 20 of them, some more so than others, at least 15 that I have, you know, that I'm involved in, and it takes a lot of our time. So, I think it's important for the community and the residents of Placer County to understand that, you know, we're not just sitting here every two weeks, we're actually out and about. You know, Placer County Transportation Planning Agency is very important, Air Protection Control District are just two, first five Children and Families Commission is an important commission as well. So, anyhow, I just wanted to make that comment.
Sure, sure. And I concur with that, there's a lot going on that we do, and then there's a lot going on that we're responsible for, such as the folks that we appoint to different committees and commissions. You know, I frequently talk to them about what they have on their plate, and I'm sure the rest of our board members do the same, so. And I too am happy with the committees and commissions that I have been appointed to, assigned to, so. Okay, I think Supervisor Ullrich, any comment? You okay?
Silence is involved.
All good? Okay. Less is more, right? Okay. Well, great, that being said, we'll bring it back.
Perfect, we'll be back to you next board meeting.
Great, go ahead and bring that back.
Make it from there. Thank you so very much.
And then I believe now, we are at that point where we can adjourn to our closed session.
The board will adjourn to closed session to discuss the conference with legal counsel on a matter of existing litigation, Sierra Club and Friends of the West Shore versus TRPA in the county. Board will also have a conference with its labor negotiators regarding PPPO, Employee Organization, and the board will then adjourn as the board of supervisors, and convene as the Placer County In-Home Support Services Public Authority for a conference with its labor negotiators.
Thank you County Council Carden.
The Board has returned from closed sessions for the discussion of the items listed in the closed session agenda. On the conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the Board heard a report from counsel and gave direction to counsel and staff. On the conference with labor negotiators regarding PPEO, the Board heard a report and gave direction to its labor negotiators. And as the, after adjourning as the Board and convening as the Placito County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority, the Board of that Authority heard a report on the status of negotiations. Then adjourned as the public authority and reconvened here as the Board of Supervisors. And that concludes this closed session report.
And therefore, we are adjourned.